Hi, everyone, and welcome to the Abington School Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 24th, 2020, and at this time, I'd like everybody to stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so at this time, we would like to see if I can get a recommendation to approve the minutes from October 13th, 2020. Anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the list is the MASC delegate resolutions. So last month, we were presented with, well, usually what happens in November, excuse me, is there's a MASC, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, delegation that they have every year in Hyannis. However, this year, they didn't have it due to COVID, so it was online. I was the representative for Abington. There was 10 resolutions that we had to go through, and I'm going to read you just a summary of how we voted and what the reservations, reservations were. So Resolution 1 was for MCAS and high-stakes testing. We all voted unanimously, 5-0, to support a not doing MCAS for this year and not holding anyone accountable for the 2022 graduation, how, for 10th graders. However, this still has to pass through DESI, so this is just a resolution through the school committee that, and it was passed unanimously by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. There was a vote, ooh, excuse me, and the vote was 102 to 21. The next resolution that we had was for the COVID state funding, and that was to provide districts with reimbursement for COVID, and Abington voted 5-0, and that was unanimously voted through the MASC as well. Resolution 3 was an anti-racism resolution, and everybody voted on Abington unanimously, and it was also passed through the MASC. Our next resolution was Resolution 4, lowering the voting age for municipal elections. Abington voted 5-0, and this was actually in order, I'm sorry, Abington voted 5-0 in order not to lower the voting age. However, the MASC delegation passed this to lower the voting age to 16. So that was for Resolution 4. Resolution 5, why don't I see that on my list? Do we skip it? Okay. Increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K through 12 education. This was passed by Abington, and it was also approved by the delegation. So the next resolution is 6. How come it's not on my list over this one? Is anybody else missing that? Thank you. No, I don't see it on yours either. Okay, 6. Retention of Medicaid revenue. So this was 4 to 1 with Abington, and it was passed through the MASC. The next resolution was attempts by US DOE to direct funding to private schools. We in Abington did not want to direct any funding to private schools, and that is how MASC passed as well that for not directing anything to the private schools. So, membership of school committee member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, that was Resolution 8. Abington passed that, and it also passed on in the MASC to have a school committee member on the board. Resolution 9 was providing equity for sexual orientation, LGBTQ students, teachers, and staff. This was passed by Abington, and it was also passed through the MASC. And Resolution 10 was the relative to monitoring of attendance of students during the pandemic. This was passed 3 to 2 in Abington, and it was also passed through the MASC. Does anybody have any questions about the resolutions? So at this time, we would like to announce the Social Emotional Learning Subcommittee and Dr. Robbins.
So we did have a meeting, and at that meeting, it was suggested that James provides some of the information at that meeting to the full committee, and so he's put together a brief PowerPoint presentation to, for that purpose. And I don't know, on that committee, we have members Jackie Abrams and Lisa Augusta. I don't know if there's more that you want to add at this point, or just wanted to make sure.
No, Dr. Is my question? I don't, Jackie, turn it on, and I can't really hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I'll move it closer, and I'll speak loud. So I think we're going to have to, barring anyone having any comments or questions about this, we're probably going to need to go out into the audience, or we're going to get sore necks.
All right. Everyone's looking settled, so I'm going to kick off. So as you all know, Social Emotional Learning is a, has been a district-wide initiative, so there are manifestations of this initiative in all of our buildings, and it's taken many different forms. So today, I'm actually here just to highlight two really positive developments in terms of, in terms of our social emotional programming throughout the district. So first, through a concerted approach by administrators and teachers, our school staff have become increasingly aware of students' social emotional status. And by that, I mean how our students are feeling on a day-to-day basis, what their mood is, and what their needs are. Additionally, students throughout the district are receiving direct instruction on social emotional competencies. And by social emotional competencies, I'm referring to like, to five separate skills, which includes self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. In addition to the direct instruction on social emotional competencies, in general education classrooms, many of our teachers are embedding quick social emotional activities, which allow for practice and growth in these skill areas among our, among our student body. So I'm going to speak about each of these developments, one by one. So first, to answer the question, how have we become better able to monitor students' social emotional status, kind of on a day-to-day basis? So I think we've effectively achieved that kind of throughout the grade span, K to 12. So at the elementary level, we, of course, continue morning circles. Now, these have been something that have been in place for years and years, thinking back to when many of us were, were students, a morning circle was part of our day. But what has changed and what has become more socially-emotionally responsive is that our morning circles are incorporating more self-reflection activities, which teach students self-awareness. Teachers are deliberately incorporating more feeling statements, which promote emotional awareness. And the teachers are deliberately incorporating holistic wellness activities, you know, such as deep breathing and yoga, which teaches all of our students self-management. In addition to this, throughout the district, we've increased pushing in our mental health specialists into routine classroom activities and other aspects of a student's day, such as recess. So by mental health specialists, I'm referring to our school psychologists, our school adjustment counselor, and our social work interns. And just by having these, by having these staff members incorporated in more like day-to-day and routine activities, it allows us to kind of lay more informed eyes on students, to see, you know, so that we can more readily identify students who are struggling. And on the other side of the coin, it normalizes relations with support staff, because it could be the case that, and many of us can think back to the not-too-distant past, where having a relationship with a member of support staff was kind of stigmatizing, that, you know, if, if you worked with the woman whose office was near the principal, you were someone who, you know, maybe had some issues that, that you ought to feel ashamed about, or something like that. But if, if, if everyone in the community just has an awareness and better relationship with mental health support staff, it makes it, it helps to just reduce the stigma to mental health and mental illness in general. So I talked about how at the elementary level, by incorporating self-reflection activities and feeling statements and holistic wellness activities, we are becoming more aware of students' SEL status. So then, as we go up toward the high school and our secondary level, as you know, all of our students participate in weekly mentor meetings. And additionally, these mentor meetings lead, lead to assignments and bridge blocks. And the way this, and the way this achieves our SEL goals is it makes it so that every student in our student body at the high school has a fairly close relationship with a member of staff. And this makes it so that any student who may be struggling with their, say, emotional management or social relationships, or who's just generally withdrawing, it's likely to be the case that in these small mentor groups, this staff member who's familiar with the student will be able to identify that we have a student in need. And this makes it so that if, if we have students in need, we can more readily refer them to support on a regular basis. So the next, the next achievement I'll talk about is just, throughout the district, we're doing a lot more just direct instruction on social emotional learning. So if we think back to previous years and the not-too-distant past, students were more or less expected to develop their social emotional skills independently. But now, students are receiving regular and direct social emotional learning instruction, which is, which is known to lead to better outcomes for kids, both academically, you know, socially and personally. So at the, at our K to 4 elementary schools, students are participating in social emotional, social emotional learning blocks on their in-person days. While teachers are allowed to kind of take an eclectic approach to this time, all of this staff incorporate the evidence-based second-step curriculum in learning, in learning sequence. The focus areas for these, for this curriculum are skills for learning, by which we mean like, how to focus your attention, how to listen carefully, how to use self-talk to stay on task. Another major concept in this curriculum is, is the skill of empathy, and just by that, we mean how to understand our own feelings and how to understand others' feelings. Another important concept of the second-step curriculum is emotional management. So these are like specific skills to calm ourselves in anxiety-provoking situations. And also problem-solving, which is basically how to solve social problems productively. So, so all of our students in the, in our K to 4 grades are getting, are participating in a social emotional learning block each week. But then, as students go on throughout the grades and reach the Abington High School, there's also an increased access to direct social emotional instruction. So as you all know, and this has been the case for many years, freshmen are required to participate in the health curriculum. But what has changed and where there's been evolution in terms of like, social emotional learning, is that there's an increasing incorporation of SEL concepts in that curriculum. So some of the concepts that are, in which there are like lessons organized around are emotional intelligence, practicing gratitude, mindfulness, and relaxation strategies, you know, such as progressive muscle relaxation. So all of, all of our freshmen participate in the health curriculum, which incorporates some SEL concepts. But additionally, there's an elective available for students in, for juniors and seniors at our high school. And this elective is called the Mind Body Spirit class. This class is led by our wellness director, Kate Casey, and this class does a deep dive into, into all those concepts that were introduced in the health class, and lasts an entire semester. So beyond direct instruction of social emotional skills, many of our general education teachers are using quick SEL activities in their class to, to build community, promote self-awareness, engagement, and self-acceptance. So I'm just going to highlight just a few common strategies that teachers across the board, so this could mean your chemistry teacher, or your English teacher, or history teacher, are using to just emphasize the importance and primacy of just our emotional selves, even when they're, even when they're, even when the class is focused on a, on a core academic area. So some common tools that are used are, are check-in slash like self-evaluating techniques. So, so many of you may have heard of two-word check-ins. So this is the case where a teacher will kind of go around the class, at the start of a class, and just, and just ask the student to say two words that kind of describes how they're feeling. Another, another way that the teachers achieve this is through, through kind of a strategy called smile, frown, and pass. So this is when a teacher stands at the front of the room, and it just asks, asks students to kind of acknowledge how they're feeling globally, you know, like, is today a smile day, a frown day, a pass day? Do they just not want to go there and pass? Similarly, kind of the same concept is like the thumbs up, thumbs down, thumb sideways. And another activity that some of the teachers are using is something called like, what's on your plate? So this involves just some crafts where they kind of divide up a plate and just say, you know, what are the things that are occupying their mind that day? You know, are they worried about a game that day? Are there issues at home? Do they have a big test that they're worried about? Just so that, so that, so that a student can better understand themselves and see commonalities between themselves and their classmates. Some teachers, too, will kind of build on, on these common strategies to promote, you know, emotional vocabulary and emotional articulation skills. So as I mentioned, a common, a common way that many of our teachers are starting their day is using something like smile, frown, and pass. And this, again, just asks students to like identify how they're feeling globally. Is today a good day? Is today a bad day? Do they just not want to go there? But, but a teacher will incorporate an additional requirement, like, by saying, okay, if you say smile, you have to say smile because, and then articulate that reason, or frown because. And so this, this incorporates, this requires students to just go into a slightly, into a slightly deeper level of reflection. All the while, the teachers are just able to, to better monitor how our students are doing and feeling, and meanwhile, our students are able, are getting experience articulating how they're doing and feeling. Additionally, and a technique really used across the curriculum is just privileging student response to activities. So as opposed to getting right into analysis, the, the approach a teacher will take is really, is really trying to have a student articulate like what their actual response is to say like the activity or task. So if they're, so say we're in an English class, what the teacher might start with is, how did this text make you feel? You know, what are your thoughts? What are your questions? What character is most powerful to you? So, so while these things all kind of have historically fallen within like the literary analysis kind of component of English Language Arts curriculum, it also serves an SEL kind of focus of just really prioritizing like identity development and self-awareness. And so teachers are more and more trying to become deliberate in, in building these skills in our students. So in summary, through staff efforts, we are better positioned to promote students' social emotional maturity and recognize when students' social emotional growth is going awry, so we can intervene early. So that's what I've got for us.
Peter.
Dr. Robbins.
So before we continue on, I want to, I want to apologize. Just before the meeting, our chair, our chairperson, Wendy Happel, asked me if I would reduce, if I would introduce Samuel Carvalho to the, to the community, and I neglected to do that, so I apologize, Samuel. I'm already off on a bad foot.
No, that's okay.
Samuel is our student representative from Abington High School, so welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
And I, I just, obviously, if people have any questions for, for James on the social emotional piece, I think we all know, this work will be best done when we're in person fully, but the fact that we're not in person fully also makes it even more timely that we're attending to the social emotional needs that we're able to attend to in the current condition. So I don't know if people have questions or comments or...
Wendy, Peter, I just had one. It was, James, you hit on K through 4, you hit on high school. There seemed to be a gap there, though, that wasn't hit on, and it was Abington Middle School. And I guess I just didn't know if there was a block, like something there or a block to hit on, so people could hear what's happening there as well.
I had the same question, actually.
I know when we, is my mic open? I know when we met, I thought it was important that James kind of went through what was happening at all the schools, because that's, that's what he was, we talked about at our meeting, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, James, but I thought at the middle school, what was happening was that was the, the two-word check-in, is that the strategy that we were kind of using at the middle school level? Like, I think the way the presentation was, it didn't directly say middle school, but it felt like that's what we talked about.
Right, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry. Sorry, James, you're going to need to, I apologize.
I tried to tell you to stop. I tried to tell you to stop before we went down.
Yeah. that level. So, yeah, Lisa, you're right. What, the emphasis at the Abington Middle, the Abington Middle School when it comes to social emotional learning is really embedded activities in, in the general education. So whereas K to, whereas K to 4, they're, they're, they're using the second-step curriculum, which is kind of like, which is an evidence-based, for lack of a better phrase, like off the, off-the-shelf sort of curriculum, so that, which is structured and organized and makes it so that, provides like guidance to, to teachers. So we provide that in the elementary levels, but then when, but then at the middle school level, the ways social emotional competencies are hit on are really through embedded activities. So, so really just focusing on the, the core concepts of, say, math, ELA, science, and social studies, but incorporating some activities that help build community and help build like response, response to the curriculum. So, you know, so for example, like in, in English, it could be the case that like, if, with a literary work, what's really emphasized is a student's like response to that text, how they're actually, how they're actually feeling when they read that, and what, you know, what experiences they may have had personally, that they can kind of tie to that, and how they may have worked through some emotions that are represented on the text. So it's a lot, so it is, it's a, the SEL approach is very much emphasized at the Abington Middle School, but it's really just incorporated sort of in the curriculum.
Okay, yeah, I knew that, like, I knew it was there, it was more, I just wanted it. I didn't want anybody saying, what about the middle school kind of thing, so I just figured I'd give you the chance to get to it.
No, I'm glad you asked, because, because I should have really highlighted that. I kind of just focused on the ends of the spectrum to kind of just show the, the difference, but thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
No problem. Thank you.
Can I just follow up to that a little bit? So in terms of explicit and direct instruction in SEL, we have the second-step K to 4, and then in the ninth grade, we have the required health class, as well as the elective that you mentioned. Is there any opportunity in 5 through 8 to do some more explicit work, like in, maybe through a health class? Or is there just going to be that gap, maybe, in, in the explicit nature of how we directly teach it? It seems like they pick it back up in ninth grade.
Right, yeah. So it is, it is the case that they also have some health classes at the middle school level, and our wellness department does work like very closely, cohesively and closely. So some, so some of the concepts that are, that are, they dive into pretty deeply in the ninth grade are introduced and touched on at the, at the health classes in, at the, at the middle school level. And I know some ideas have been tossed around in terms of the middle school, in terms of doing some more direct instruction, like perhaps, like the second-step curriculum that we use, K to 4, they also have a middle school component. So like identifying maybe a time to, to do that has been kind of an ongoing discussion.
So would it be like, I know Lisa and I have talked about the nature of the subcommittee, and like, how long do you keep a subcommittee going? And like, would it be helpful to refocus our work a little around specifically the middle school in, in the next, you know, however long we keep this subcommittee kind of in place? It seems like maybe that's where we should target some of our work in how to kind of beef up, because those years, particularly just for that age group, are challenging, socially and emotionally anyway. I didn't know if like, I'm just speaking kind of like to the three of us, if we maybe should think about that for future meetings. I think we've batted around like a few different ideas, second step came up, but I, I don't think that necessarily we've spent all that much time talking about the middle school, so food for, food for thought for us, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, just one thought I would, I would share in response to that, is that I would endorse that thought, not, not because I think there's anything lacking in programming or, or initiative or zeal at the, at the middle school level, but just because it is the case in terms of adolescent development, that it, that with, with the introduction of puberty and hormonal changes, that's often associated with significant changes in emotionality. And so it is the case that students at the age level that coincide with middle school are probably the most predisposed to a lot of emotional difficulties. So for that reason, I would definitely say, you know, some more focus on the middle school absolutely works.
I think, too, like, we just need to get better at feedback. Like, I mean, if, if everything's going great across all the grades in terms of social emotional learning, then we should probably disband the subcommittee. Like, I don't know that we need subcommittees working on things that are all set. So I think that I would just like push us, and I mean, I wasn't even at the last meeting because I mixed up my schedule, so this is no judgment on, on our work, but just maybe like, can we get more specific around what goals and what timeline? Like, how long do we see us needing this type of subcommittee? What are our goals in the next however many months? We kind of took on a big task, I thought, when we started it, and I know a lot of good work has come out of it, but just, I'm just thinking aloud here for a minute, as we're, as I was reflecting on your presentation, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
So I'll just continue on to report the superintendent of schools. For the committee members in your packet, you have the, the search process for the high school principal and for the out-of-district...
For the committee members in your packet, you have the, the search process for the high school principal and for the out-of-district early education program coordinator, the, the search process for both of those positions. The timetables are a little bit different. We've already advertised, we've had some people reach out to the on the, the program coordinator and the out-of-district search committee for the AEEP. The dates there, we hope to take a group of stakeholders, the way we have in the past, parents, school community members, administration, teachers, and come together, develop interview questions, do a, do a screening process of the applicants, interview the... the applicants that the screening committee would like to bring in. Then we would do a second round of interviews with me and, and, you know, based on, based on what is sent to me and other administrators. We probably won't be doing site visits in these conditions. Check references and talk to not only the people, the references that are provided to us, but anyone who will talk to us about any of the individuals who are finalists. And then hope to bring a person for the AEEP to you at the first week of January. Then similarly, and, and so I'd ask tonight, or if after the meeting, or at some point, maybe before next week, you could tell me which member of the committee would, would be interested in serving on that screening committee. Similarly, for the high school principal search, the, the dates are, are just behind. We hope to come back to you, similar process, the process I just described to you, a one that I think people are familiar with, where we're inclusive of the various stakeholder groups, and I hope to come to you by the end of January, or perhaps even sooner, with a high school principal appointment. And for that committee, I'd be asking if there were two school community members who were available for that process. And again, you can, you can give those names to me tonight, or beginning of next week, and then we'll, we'll try to find two people that walk on water.
Is anyone else interested? I know Chris had told me that he was interested in the Abington Education, the early education principal. Is anyone else interested? So Chris, would you like to still?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Do that, okay. Is anyone interested in the high school position?
So Danielle and I will do the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my next item is to talk about snow days just a little bit. So, at some point, it is gonna snow, and I hope not a lot, but if it does, and we have to cancel school, I do not feel like the best work would be having a remote snow day. I wanna, I'll explain this recommendation, I'll explain what I'd like to do to the committee. I'd like to, I don't, I don't know that we need to take a vote on it, but I, I want to know certainly what you think, and I wanna, hopefully we get consensus on this. And then, if you felt comfortable, what I would ask for is probably voting a calendar change, but I'll, I'll back up. If we have a snow day as it stands, we, we, in the hybrid mo, in the hybrid model, we've got, obviously you know, green and wave on separate days doing separate things, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesday, everybody's doing the same thing. So if it snows on a, on a Wednesday, there's no cancellation. We're able to continue on as long as people have power. If we don't have power, we wouldn't be able to continue on, that would change things. But if it snows on Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, we've got two different groups who are in two different places with two different lesson plans. It's not as simple as just bringing them all together at once. You'd imagine, you know, a teacher wakes up at six o'clock early in the morning and learns there's a snow day, and they don't have, it's not anticipated, there's, there's still a, a plan for two different groups of students that are in two different places. So there would need to be a delay before we started the school day, so they could scramble to try to put something together. Now, if they had something pre-made that they could just input, it, it would be out of, it, it wouldn't be a continuation of learning, it would be a different, it would be curriculum-driven, but it wouldn't fit neatly into where the students were with their learning. So what a teacher would have to do is try to put together a lesson for both groups with a delay, which would mean a shortened scheduled day for our students, and the periods would happen in a more rapid succession, bringing the, likely bringing the two groups together. That feels to me, for the educational purpose, for educational purposes, for the benefit of our students, not as well-done. People would work hard to do it, but it wouldn't be as well-done as just making up the day in June. And we're spending a lot of time talking about providing good service to our students. We want to do, we want to provide the best service possible, and so for those reasons, and I want to answer questions that people have about this, my recommendation is gonna be that we don't do remote snow days should we get a big storm on a Monday, Tuesday, or a, or a Thursday, Friday, but, but we make up the day in June. And, you know, another thing that could happen if you, if we cross our fingers is, hopefully, we'll be doing more in-person learning at that point anyway. I'm optimistic that that'll happen, and hopefully that make-up day would, would include that. So, I want to answer any questions people may have.
Would that still be an issue if we were fully remote in the first place?
Good question, Samuel. It would not be if we were fully remote in the first place, because teachers would have a lesson planned for that day, and as long as there was power, that, that day could go forward. It's the hybrid model with students in green and, and wave at different places that really makes this more difficult.
So why don't we just go fully remote?
The majority of people want us in-person as much as possible, and the majority feeling is that's what's best for kids.
Well, personally, I feel like remote is just the better and safer option, and I actually did an Instagram poll with over 125 students who voted on it, sixty percent of which agreed that remote was the better option, and those who voted for hybrid agreed that learning in-person is just better for them, and I feel like learning is better in-person for everyone, but I feel like the priority should be everyone's safety. And if we were to go fully remote, we wouldn't come across these issues, it would be a lot easier to manage.
I'm for easier, because this is awful.
Yeah.
But I, unless we're forced to go to remote due to the trajectory of the virus and spread, I am, I'm anticipating that we're gonna be, you know, hybrid or more in-person, hopefully than we are, rather than go, I hope we don't go fully remote again.
Yeah, I mean, and, and it's been doing pretty good so far in terms of the cases, so as long as it just doesn't get any worse.
Peter, I have a quick one. Have you run, I'm, I'm gonna take a little leap, have you run it by staff, administration, their thoughts? Like, what are their thoughts on this? If you haven't, then it's okay.
Yeah, I've, I've done some initial discussion with the leadership of the Education Association and our administrative team. You can imagine, nobody wants to jump out in front and be like, yeah, that's a great idea. Generally, I think this is a consensus that this would be the best for the students, rather than trying to scramble and put something together that doesn't fit.
No, no, I, I never thought of it till actually, till right now. I think I just, I think in my mind, I just thought that that's how it worked, but it does make more sense. I mean, you can hope it snows on Wednesdays.
Right. And I just, for a change, I'd like to be out in front of this disease and what we're doing, and so before Thanksgiving, when we haven't had to cancel school, and I hope we don't, I wanted to, I wanted to have this discussion. And, and again, if people feel comfortable tonight, voting, the addition of days I hope that we never use in the school calendar, that would be great, and if people want to come back, and we can do that, at our next meeting, we could also do that.
Aren't five snow days always built in, anyway?
They, they are, we did not build them in this time.
Oh, okay. I can think in my mind, they just were.
I think, as, I feel the same way, Chris. Back when we were putting the schedule together, I didn't think we'd have to worry about it, because we would just be able to handle it with the technology, but as we get further and further into this from lessons learned, and we're gonna talk about this a little bit later in the agenda, I just, you know, I want to, I want to continue to adjust and do what we can, and I think, the thinking here is the realization of, now that we've lived this a little while, what it would really look like for kids.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a few quick comments, and I feel like this goes against what I would normally say. I'm just thinking that no matter what, it's not gonna be neat, and there's no guarantee that the days will even out at the end of the year, so if we miss a green or a wave day, we don't know that that day is gonna be made up, and it's gonna throw the teachers off anyways. If they miss, for example, a Monday, then that Monday won't get potentially made up, and they're not gonna see the kids for that Monday, and so the continuation of their learning is gonna be disrupted. So, for me, I'm almost feeling, and knowing that days later in June, usually good quality learning doesn't happen, and that the silver lining of remote learning is that we might be able to have an official final day, and parents would be able to plan for summer activities. So my, my gut feel on it, my thought, is that I would normally say I'm all-in for having more school days, but in this case, I almost think that having a remote day, if teachers had a go-to assignment that they were ready to do, a, a reading or something that they could pull out and do with their class, I don't know. I think I almost feel like remote, a remote day that doesn't have to be made up might be better. I, I just don't know if that, it's gonna be messy no matter what, and I don't know if the days will even out, and if the, the gain that we're thinking that we would get from, I don't know if there's gonna be consistency. I think we're gonna lose that, no matter whether we put the day at the end of the year or do it remote. That's just my thought.
So one of the, what I would, what I would add, what I'd want to do is I'd want to repeat, if, so, I don't want to be in hybrid all year. If we were in hybrid all year, I'd want to make up the day that was missed the way that it was missed. So if green was supposed to be in purpose, in, in person, I'd want to make up the green day. Currently, if we had no more interruptions, green would have sixty-three days and wave would have sixty-five, if you count the days we've already had, and you project out the rest of the year. So we're pretty close. We'd, we'd, you know, in the perfect world, we swing one day. I think it's early to talk about swinging any days at this point, because we don't know what the future's gonna bring with, with, with the disease or snow. So, I do, I do want to, you know, I'd like to get consensus on this, so if this is something the committee wants to hold on, we could add it to a broader discussion, and we could, it would be a part of the collective bargaining process in terms of what that day would look like when we go and talk about the MOU. And if it snows between now and then, without a plan in place, I believe it would, we'd, we'd want to make up the day. But what the day looks like would be something that we would add to the conversation we're about to have with the association about the MOU. We could also do that.
I prefer to wait, but the tough part is that we're, the next scheduled meeting's January fifth. I mean, December hasn't been too bad lately, so, I mean, I would prefer to honestly wait and see what, and talk to some people about it, talk to some people in the community about what they think. That's my personal preference. I mean, if enough people wanted to make a motion of vote on it, I would, I would vote tonight if we had to.
I would vote tonight as well if anybody wanted to, otherwise, I just think waiting till January, you don't know what's gonna happen with December with snow days. And I mean, to me, I mean, I just, I, I would prefer if the kids didn't have to go to school on a snow day or attend online, just because, just trying to make it as normal as possible for them, you know, I mean, having a little bit of fun in between if, if it can be done, but...
So I believe, and, and holding is fine, and it's not, it's kind of reminded of a conversation I had with Jackie before we started, you know, what's the worst that can happen? Sometimes, when you think about, the worst that can happen is that we, if there's a snow day between now and January fifth, we, we'd be making it up, because we don't have a plan in place. We really have to. Once that plan is pla, in place, then, then we could, then we could do the remote snow day. We're, we have, we have meetings set up with the association in mid-December to, in, in two weeks to talk about the MOU. Again, there'll be, this would be a part of that discussion, so that we could get a plan in place with all the teachers.
We had a snow day on, like, a Monday on green, we would make up a green day at the end, that's how we would do it?
If we were in the hybrid at the close of the year, that's what, that's what I believe we should do.
So if we're not in hybrid, then what would we do?
Then we would make up the day, depending on whatever model we're in. So if we were, you know, being really optimi, if we were being optimistic and we were all in person, then we would all, everybody have a school day.
And it's fine that if one cohort has that many more days than another, like, it's relatively close?
Well, I mean, that's a judgment call, I think, on everyone's part. In the perfect world, we weren't perfectly aligned, because we couldn't get perfectly aligned to begin with. We, now we're off really by, by a swing of one day. You know, if we could move a day from wave to green, then they'd be perfectly even.
Do you have a preference?
I don't know, I, I, I think we had a conversation about it a while back, a few weeks back, and, and I was all about have a snow day, make up the day at the end, and then, you know, in talking, like, just the logistics of it's a green day, wave day, and how you're gonna get those, had, make it more seamless, and everyone kind of on the same page, I feel like it's gonna be more difficult to just go into a school day, or like a remote day. So I guess my preference would be, and I guess, do I vote tonight? Yeah, I mean, I, I can, I'll vote tonight.
I don't know if I'm beaten down by 2020, but I do not have an opinion, and I will happily go along with whatever the majority is, but I do have a comment for Samuel. So, the purpose of having a student in your seat tonight, or normally, is to have the student perspective and the student voice, and to bring that to our meetings, so, and silent participation doesn't help us to grow or to do better. So I just want to thank you for speaking up, and...
Sure, yeah.
Meeting number one, like, out of the gate, I'm glad you're here, and that's exactly what you're here to do, is to bring us your perspective and the perspective of students. So thank you, I just, I'm glad that you're talking.
Yeah, sure. I just feel like me and the other students are really worried about what's gonna happen, especially with Thanksgiving coming up. I personally have seen a lot of people on social media posting that they are not social distancing, and it's just unfair that so many students are being put at this risk because people aren't doing what they're supposed to do, and, like, it's really tough for students like me who work. If I come in contact with someone in school who turns out to test positive, I'm, I won't be able to work or go to school, so that's my education, and, you know, making money. Those are just two very important things to me that I have to put on hold, because people aren't, other people aren't doing what they need to do.
Thank you for bringing that to us. So I'm open to whatever you guys want to do about the snow days. We can vote tonight or wait if the majority wants to wait.
I prefer to wait. I prefer to wait, just, and even if so, maybe, Peter, it could be more of a proposal in laying out... I prefer to wait, just, and even if so, maybe Peter could be more of a proposal and laying out exactly what your proposal is kind of thing. You know, I mean, I know, we're kind of getting, we're kind of getting it on the fly at the same time, a little bit, so, that'd be my preference. Again, if the decision is to vote on something tonight, I will vote, so. But my preference would be to wait until our next meeting.
So it's like we have two waits, two nows, and one?
I'll wait with them.
Okay.
I want to vote, too.
Perfect.
So we'll wait.
Thank you.
Peter, our first meeting with the AEA is the first or second week of December?
The 12th of December.
Because
I think.
We could potentially, depending on that meeting, have to, like, could we have to undo some of the work if we voted on it tonight anyway? Or, like, is this something that would be talked about?
It's easy if people feel as though the best thing is to make up the day. Because then, then we don't have to talk about it with the Association. And I'm not looking for the easy way out.
Right, but we'll have had two meetings with the Association
Correct.
before we come back to our next
Correct.
school committee meeting. So we'll have more information anyway on their perspective, so.
Yes.
That'll be good.
So I wasn't trying to shortcut things, it just seemed apparent to me that that was the solution. So I wanted to offer it tonight because if it does snow in December, at least, you know, at least now people have had a thorough discussion of what some of our challenges are.
Thank you.
And, I should have, I apologize, Dr. Michelle should have had her own section on the agenda.
That's okay.
And that's my fault. But she has for us the, if there's nothing more on that, she has for us the salary and expense allocation that we need to look at annually.
So annually, the school committee votes on the salary and expense allocation of the school department general fund budget. This is inclusive of the money from town meeting last week that was allocated to the school department. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve the salary and expense allocation as presented.
I'm going to motion.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you want to continue on?
Sure, so, believe it or not, we've started planning for our FY22 school department budget. So in front of you, you have the planning and development, planning, development schedule. I can tell you that this week, we've received budget requests from all of the schools, department heads and directors, and beginning on Monday, Mr. Schaefer and I will be meeting with all of those people to discuss their budgets and put together a preliminary budget for the school committee for the January, the January meeting. Additionally, we will, I would assume in the coming weeks, meet with the finance group at Town Hall to start talking about what forecasting is for FY22. And that's just for your information.
Thank you.
Are there any questions on that?
Are you not looking for a vote?
I don't think they have to vote. You do vote, usually vote the schedule, sorry. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the budget development and article planning schedule.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, the next item is we are, we are one full term into this new teaching and learning experience, and we started talking about an MOU in June, and you guys know the history. It's actually rather painful because while we were talking about what back to school might look like, the state continued to churn out guidelines for us that changed the discussion as we went. We really didn't get final guidance until the middle of August on a lot of the things that we needed, and a lot of hours, hours and hours were done over the summer. I want to thank the committee members, our Chair Wendy Hopple and member Jackie Abrams for the time we spent, and with the Association for the time they spent putting together this plan. But now we've lived it, and there are adjustments that we can make, and we want to talk about those in terms of the work that's done for kids. And in your packet, you've got a copy of that letter requesting that from the Association. What I'd like to ask tonight, before the members leave, we don't need to do it during the meeting, but after the meeting, we could take a look at our calendars. And I was hoping that next week, after people return from Thanksgiving, we could do an executive session with the entire committee to talk about people's feelings and thoughts, so that we'd have a broader, well, broader, you know, the committee members fully being able to explain some of the things that they'd like to talk about and see when we go into this next review of the MOA. I want to answer people's questions, and again, if, after this meeting, we could get a date next week to meet, I'd appreciate it.
Peter, I just have one quick question. The original MOU does cover the entire school year, correct?
It does.
Okay. I just wanted, for anybody listening, that it's not expiring, there's not going to be
No.
anything out there. I just wanted to clarify that the one that was agreed to does cover the entire school year as it stays, okay.
And as everybody knows, it's got those three different conditions in it, the three different modes spelled out three different ways.
So Peter, is there a, you've sent this letter to Steve Shannon. Do you have any dates scheduled or anything to meet with them, or are you meeting with us first?
Yeah, I can't remember, it's the 12th or the 14th of December is our first meeting, it's one or the other. We have two dates set with the Association. But it'd be good to get some proposals to them in advance, so that we could move through this rather than spending time in Teams meetings, and we can have some responses ready. Dr. Michelle?
I have a, we have a school building update I wanted to give you. We're close to closing out the project of the pre-K middle high school. There are really two and a half outstanding items that we're still working through in collaboration with our project manager and our contractor. The reclaimed water system, if you remember, we had to reinstall, well, they had to reinstall some piping around the, you know, the, actually, TV studio this summer. And now we're working with the contractor to get our reclaimed water system back online. It's been offline for about two years, so we'll be over winter break, be draining the tank, sanitizing the tank, and getting the reclaimed water system back online. And if you remember, that's the system that collects rainwater from the roof. We have a holding tank under the driveway, and that's what's used to, for example, flush toilets within the building. So I'm hoping in the next couple of months that we'll be up and running. We've talked a number of times about the tennis courts and some premature cracking on the tennis courts. We've done an investigation, we as in the designer, and the company that, the contractor that installed the tennis courts has also done a concurrent investigation. We are in discussions with Bray and Gwickley now around some remediation of the cracking and a long-term plan that will get us to the anticipated life of the tennis courts to reduce the cracking that's there. And reduce the cracking and fix the cracking and not impact the playability of the play surface. So that is ongoing. Another item of note that many people have commented on are the southeast playing fields. That was that final field that was installed as you pull in the drive on the right-hand side. That was the last field that was done, and, well, we haven't played extensively on it because there's been significant issues with the turf itself. And we've had the contractor back, they've tried to level it out, they overseeded, they fertilized, we've worked collaboratively with the town, who is responsible for the mowing and general maintenance of the field, and it is not acceptable. So, two weeks ago, we had a meeting with, again, the contractor, the designer, the designer of the field, and proposal has now gone to our contractor with what we believe needs to happen in that, well, not what needs to happen, but a thorough investigation by three companies that do that kind of turf management and to develop a remediation plan, so those fields can be playable, safe and playable. So, although we've missed playing seasons, which we're well aware of, and it's not fair to the town, we are, I just want people to know that this is not done. And we are, we're pushing to make sure that that southeast field is safe and playable for everybody. Any questions? Thank you.
I just want to highlight a couple informational things if I could. Under informational, there's a new organizational subcommittee structure. It's not a, the change here is not a subcommittee, but it's a liaison. The school committee has traditionally had a liaison to the sports boosters, and what we've done is we've expanded that to the activities, arts, and athletics, which is a move that pre-COVID we should have made. During COVID, certainly, it's even more important. The things that we're doing in the student life are so much more complicated now. Having a member of the committee who's in on the discussions about these things, whether it's international travel, or it's athletics, for example, our winter season, we're hopeful we'll be able to begin our winter season on the 14th of December for basketball and hockey. There's a number of rule changes. Lisa Augusta has been given this position by our Chair Wendy Hopple. And the league has made some decisions with some of the rules and regulations that have been passed down from the MIAA and DESI and DPA. For example, the league wants to begin without having any fans whatsoever at the games. And that may be disappointing to some, but the reason for that and the effort is because we want to do these, to Samuel's point, kids are scared. I've heard that from our students, our student athletes have said that before when they've gone to other places, that they're nervous about the way some of the other places manage the different rules that they have. And so, being sensitive to that, the league wants to get the students back playing first, and then phase in adding spectators after all of the conditions to keep the student athletes safe are met first. So, it's going to be important, back to my point, I think, to have a liaison who is able to have a window into these things, give input, and then help us bring things to the full committee as and when and if they're needed. So, I want to point that out. Another informational item, Abington Middle School's been awarded, again, the designation of being a Microsoft showcase school. It avails the middle school of additional professional development and additional technology advisors through Microsoft, and when COVID's over, that involves being able to go to Microsoft and being able to avail yourself of some of their facilities for some of our tech leadership, for some of our technology leaders. And when I say "technology leaders," I'm going to jump around a little bit on the informational items. Rich Vaikowski has provided me, and I thought it'd be a good thing for people to see, a memo on the number of tickets. And a ticket is when there's a problem with a piece of technology, that he and Oliver, and I know, I know that Vicki focuses on professional development, I know that she's probably also helping you with tickets. And so, this is a team of three people that has, you can see the numbers and how they've grown. The most recent number, 2021, is of 2098 different problem-solved people. So it's rather miraculous that they're able to get to all of that and appreciate everything that they do for all of us to keep us up and running. You also have information here about the standard-based report card, the NIASK visit to the high school, the recipients of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and then a piece on a letter that the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents sent out on the governor's statements about getting us all back to school in person. We all want to be back in person when we're able to, as we're able to, and this just outlines some of the things that need to happen before we can do that. With the current safety requirements in place, it's going to be a challenge. It also can be something that we can continue to talk about with the Association when we meet with them in December, in terms of what some of these things might be. But I just want to include this back in, so people are aware. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So it looks like we are on to the dates to remember. So tomorrow, Wednesday, November 25th, is a half-day. Thursday and Friday, November 26th and 27th, is Thanksgiving break. All school offices and buildings will be closed. Wednesday, December 4th, is a half-day professional development for staff.
It's December 2nd.
December 2nd.
Oh, excuse me, what?
It's December 2nd, it's a typo.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wednesday, December 2nd, is a half-day professional development for staff. Wednesday, December 23rd, through Friday, January 4th, 2021, is winter break. And Tuesday, January 5th, is a school committee meeting with the budget hearing. I also want to just put out a congratulations to the 43 Abington High School seniors who received the John and Abigail Adams scholarships. I want to thank Samuel for being our rep, and I'm sure we're going to have a great year together. And just one other announcement, there is a given tree at the police station, and it's for senior citizens. So if you would like to donate a gift to the senior citizens, there's a tree there. You can pick a tag and then just return it to either the police station or the senior center. And it would be very helpful to the seniors this season.
Just one more date of Tuesday, December 1st, at 6:30 PM for parents or family members of Beaverbrook or Woodsdale. It looks like there's going to be an informational webinar about the new report cards.
Okay.
Is that going to be recorded by any chance, or is it just a one-and-done? If you can make it, you can make it.
I see a thumbs up from
Okay.
Mr. Pasta.
That's great, but I just, for any parents who might be interested in learning more about the new report cards, check it out, December 1st.
Okay, Jackie, thank you, pointing that out. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss? No, it looks like I am going to look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night, thanks for coming.